All right. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? All right. Appreciate you coming out. If you could all please rise to salute the flag. Counselor Eager is going to lead it. Okay. Before we take the roll call, there's a Massachusetts law that says I have to ask if anybody here is audio or videotaping or recording the meeting in any way because the city is. Anyone? Okay, great. Otto, can you take a roll?
Certainly. Counselor Laflambeau.
Present.
Counselor Griffin.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Eager.
Here.
Counselor Clune.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
President Sullivan.
Here, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
With the second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Griffin, we have, just so everyone knows, we have nine public hearings this evening, unprecedented number, so hopefully we'll be efficient and do our due diligence. Counselor Griffin, you'd like to start us off?
Yes. Thank you, President Sullivan. I'd move to continue the public hearing for a petition submitted by EverSource Gas for main, gas main replacement on Neptune Ave, Avon Ave, Avondale Ave, Rochelle Street, Roslyn Ave, and Harrison Place.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. And just so everyone knows, that's continued to June 6th, our next regular meeting. Counselor Griffin?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Move to open the public hearing to consider the utility positions, petition submitted by EverSource Gas for gas main replacement on Brezhnev Hand Street, Bridge Street, New Bridge Street, Main Street, Sumner Street, Cook Street, Bernard Street, and Mulberry Street.
Second.
We've been seconded. Do we have anyone to hear from the utility? Maybe give us a brief presentation?
Utility Subcommittee voted two in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. So the gist of the project is we are planning to replace, install approximately 3,300 feet of plastic medium pressure in order to retire approximately 3,600 feet of cast iron low pressure within the neighborhoods that Counselor Griffin listed, ahead of the paving for the Route 147 Mass DOT project.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the council? Okay. Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We've been seconded. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Why don't I do this one? I'll move to open the public hearing to consider the mayor's proposed fiscal year 2023 capital and operating budgets, the ambulance enterprise fund, the water enterprise fund, the sewer enterprise fund, and the cable television public access enterprise fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have a brief presentation from the mayor or the CFO?
Brief presentation, yes. So I'll be very brief and then I'll open it up to Sharon, who has a little presentation for you up on the screen. First of all, as I told you before, bad news first. This is our first budget in seven years that increases taxes. General reasons for that include obviously supply chain issues, inflation, everything we're seeing on the news. Just as the gas price has spiked at the pump, those same issues affect us too in our budget. Specific issues to West Side are a 15% increase to our health insurance this year, over a million dollars in increased costs to special education services, and the closeness of our largest taxpayer, the old coal-fired power plant on the Rotary. Besides increased costs, little, as I mentioned, has changed in this budget from year to year. We did add a tree warden this year. That's something we've been working on over the past couple of years with our new central maintenance director specifically now, but also the Tree and Urban Forest Committee, as well as the Garden Club, to make sure we retain our Tree City title. And then finally with that, I was very brief. I'll turn it over to Sharon, who has a PowerPoint for you.
Okay, thank you. Sharon?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? All right. I will also try to be brief. I'm just going to go through the operating budget. The enterprise fund budgets sort of speak for themselves, I believe, so there aren't a lot of changes there. So we'll go through the highlights of the operating budget. So I'm going to start with revenue and how we're funding the budget. So the general fund budget is being funded 59%. Almost 60% of our budget is funded from local taxes, real estate and personal property taxes. The largest piece after that is state aid, which is a 32% portion of the funding of our budget, and then local funds make up about 6%. And then the various other funding sources make up a small percentage of how we're going to fund this budget. So compared to last year, net property taxes, which I'll talk about how we got there in the next slide, but net property taxes are an increase of almost 7%. Net state aid, which is net of assessments, is an increase of 7.8%. Local revenue up almost 4%, and then the other funding sources are up slightly. Free cash is used for one-time sources, so that's up about 10%. And new this year is a transfer from the debt stabilization fund, which will help increase, help fund some of the increase in the debt service costs for this year. So MGM Surrounding Community is the same as per our Surrounding Community agreement. That'll be about $425,000 coming in. So property taxes, comparing fiscal '22 to fiscal '23, if you look at property taxes raised in the fiscal '22 column I highlighted in blue, before the allowance for abatements and exemptions, we raised $64,399,140. The corresponding highlight in the fiscal '23 column, property taxes raised before new growth, so that's taxes on existing properties as they were during the fiscal '22 budget, will be a 5% increase. That's a $67,619. And then we're estimating $875,000 for new growth, and consequently, $800,000 for an allowance for abatements and exemptions, which is what gets us to the $67 million that you saw on the previous slide. So this is a trend of property taxes compared to our neighboring communities, a trend from 2013 to current. And I just wanted to highlight, if I can, so the middle line, the blue, the darker blue line in the middle, is the West Springfield taxes, and you can see that we've been fairly level over the past 10 years, gradual increases, but fairly flat. And you can see compared to our neighbors, they've kind of gone up and down over the years. So we started at the beginning of that period, kind of in the middle of the pack, and when you get to 2022, we're one of the lower average single-family tax bills. And then this is just a chart comparing '22, which is the last rates available. Our tax rate is the dark blue towards the end of each chart, commercial and residential, and you can see that we're fairly low as far as our surrounding communities as well. So state aid, net state aid, as I mentioned, is state aid that we will be receiving versus assessments that are assessed by the state. I won't go into all the line items in detail, but Chapter 70 is one of the larger increases, a 7.67% increase. And that's the main driver in most of the increase in state aid. Another slight increase in unrestricted state aid as well. And then the assessments on the bottom are up and down depending upon the category. Local revenue, we've tweaked. '22, we were still a little cautious coming out of the pandemic. So what you're seeing for the '23 column is really kind of a back to return to normal. We've been seeing our trends returning to normal, so we've estimated our receipts based on what we're seeing in '22 to date. And that's just a chart of what makes up what percentage. You can see motor vehicle excise is 44% of our local revenue, and then meals, hotel tax, meals excise represent the next larger slices of the pie. On the expenditure drive, the mayor, the mayor covered a lot of this, so I'll just touch on this briefly. But on this side of things, you can see that the general fund, not, regular recurring for municipal is about 28%, and 43% is recurring for school. Employee benefits is the next larger slice of the pie, and then other smaller pieces of the budget make up the difference. And this is a comparison to last year's budget, the fiscal '22 budget that we're currently operating in. And the recurring municipal is up 3.83%, recurring school 5.45%. Reserve for wage fluctuates from year to year depending upon what is not settled in our contracts, so those are unsettled union contracts that will be settled somewhere during the course of the year, and that money will be transferred to the appropriate budgets at that time. Both school and municipal unions are represented in that number. And then employee benefits is up 10%, and I'll speak about that a little more on one of the following slides. So operating costs for municipal recurring, same level of services as prior years. We continue to fund departmental needs and equipment. Any negotiated salary increases are included. And as the mayor mentioned, we do have some new positions that we've included in this budget, and we have a few positions that were previously grant-funded or part-time that have been increased to full-time positions. On the school side, the biggest driver of the increase is the special education costs. There's also a couple of new positions added on the school side and negotiated salary increases in their budget. One of their larger unions does have a settled contract, so that is reflected in their union, in their budget numbers of 5.45%. Reserve for wage I talked about, that's pretty self-explanatory. So employee benefits, the two major categories in employee benefits are contributory retirement, which is on a funding schedule. It increases a little over 4% every year, so that's as been determined by the funding schedule. The health insurance cost is the big driving factor in the employee benefit increase, and that's a 15% increase. And that's based on where our claims are this year versus what we have available in the trust fund balance is how we've come up with the 15% increase for this year. That's shared by the town and by the employees. And just as a graph to show you where we've been with insurance, so it, we were fairly level in our insurance appropriation. Over the last several years, we've increased slightly. So '21 was a 6% increase, '22 a 6% increase, and then '23 is the 15% increase. And correspondingly, you can see how the trust fund balance has gone down over those years based on increased claims. So debt service is our next large increase. We did have a large issue that we put out in December of 2021. That was to take advantage of low rates, and based on that, we will have a slight spike in debt service costs over the next few years. We are funding that with a little bit of money from the debt service stabilization fund to stabilize that spike. And with that, I will turn it over to questions.
All right, so what I'd like to do is offer an opportunity for anyone in the public to ask questions first before I go to the council. If anyone wants to ask a question, please come up, state your name, address, and if whoever the department head, mayor, Sharon, if they don't have an answer for you now, then we'll make, we'll ensure that we get you an answer prior to the council voting on the budget. So having said that, is anyone from the public like to address Linda?
Linda Parent, Belmont Avenue. Can I only ask one question, or can I ask all my questions?
Yeah, go ahead. Rattle them off. One at a time, though.
My first one is on the health insurance. When is the last time it was audited? We're self-insured. We should be auditing that at least every other year. You're leaving money on the table. And I'd also like to know what percentage we get for our drug rebates.
Can anyone answer those, or if not, then before you leave, we'll have hand the questions to Otto.
You can ask them all now, or I can read back what we sent earlier. Can you just read it back?
Well, I, oh, that was on Medicaid.
No, I sent you one right before here, too.
Oh, I was here.
I'll just read it.
All right.
So based on that first one, why don't we audit the claims that Blue Cross pays? BCBS, Blue Cross windshield, has a rigorous, rigorous claim auditing program known as Blue Claim Payment Integrity. As part of this program, claims are audited against provider network contracts, medical and payment policies, and reimbursement guidelines. They're also perform post-payment audits of diagnosis-related group outpatient and professional claims, and provider audits of paid professional provider claims. The pharmacy benefits are also audited quarterly or more. We are not aware of any local municipalities that use an independent auditor. Next question on rebates. The town's taken every measure possible to make sure that we are maximizing any savings available to us by negotiating prescription rebates, participating in programs like Pillar Prescription Cost Share, which has saved the town an additional $212,646.37 to date. Percentage rebate is different for every prescription, so there's not a flat percentage rate that we can provide.
How about the rebates from Blue Cross? Blue Cross should be giving you a percentage of the rebates they get. And if it's less than 85%, we're getting ripped off. Number two, secondly, I didn't hear anything about duplicate claims and checking for that. And there are duplicate claims. I worked for insurance for 30-something years. We're leaving money on the table. You want to hire an independent audit. And whether it's Blue Cross, Cigna, Aetna, no matter who you have, you should be auditing. My next question on the, the insurance is on the, the trust fund. That really should be used. Should you want to change insurance companies, the day you cancel Blue Cross, anything that's not paid, including what's in the Blue Cross office, gets shipped back to you. And that's the trust fund that you need to use to pay those claims. So you should have at least 25% of your insurance budget in-house to pay runout claims, and that's what those are called. My next question is on cable. For years, and Dick, I don't know how many of you remember Dick Newman, who was a selectman. He campaigned on getting free cable for all public buildings, and we negotiated that out of the contract last year, I believe, and I'd like to know why, and it's costing the city money because we're paying, I know the senior center is paying to have cable access. We shouldn't be doing that.
And someone?
I don't know who's negotiating our contracts.
Mr. Mayor, anyone?
Just pulling up the agreement that we have with Comcast. So we did renegotiate the cable franchise agreement in 2020, and we maintained the existing cable drops that we had, which were in the last tenure agreement. We didn't add any to them, but we do have cable provided to all the fire stations, the town hall, the police department. The senior center is listed, so if they're paying, then that's an error. The high school, the middle school, and the school department are all listed as cable locations.
Free cable. Linda, follow up?
The senior center is paying for cable. They are not getting it for free, and Sarah's here. She'll confirm it.
Okay, that'll be looked into. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public have any questions? And Linda, you can leave your questions with Otto anyway, so we have him for the minutes. Oh, okay. Anyone else from the public? Nancy?
Nancy Farrell, Beacon Hill Road, also a member of the school committee. I'm here asking you to support the school department budget in full. If we look at the numbers for Chapter 70 for FY '22, the school department received $33,125,116. This year's the three budgets, the governor's proposal, the House Ways and Means, and the Senate. The proposal for Chapter 70 aid is $35,695,116. Charter school reimbursement for FY '22 was $269,136. FY '23, the charter school reimbursement, according to the House budget, would be $585,871. If I have my calculations correct, that's an increase of $2,929,735. So I think that the increase in the school budget should be completely funded. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, any, oh.
Kira Thompson, Orchard View Street. I'm also on the school committee. I'm here as a parent today, though, not a school committee. I just want you to support the school budget. I've talked every single year with every opportunity to support the school budget long before I was on the school committee. We are one of the lowest school budgets in the area, so cutting anything from that is just, as far as a parent is concerned, unacceptable. I brought my daughter here so she could hear that you guys really support the school budget, so we'd love to hear that. Just want to put that out there. Thank you very much. And as Nancy proved with her numbers, because Nancy has all the math and I do not ever, it should be fully funded and we can afford it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the operating budget? Anyone on the capital budget? Okay. How about, anyone, any comments on any of the enterprise fund, ambulance, water fund, sewer enterprise fund? We've already had a comment on the cable public access fund and revolving funds. Any comments from the public on any of those? Okay. Seeing none, I'll open it up to any counselors. Kate, we have another shot at this, to ask questions of the department head if the public hearing's closed. Yeah. Okay. Any counselors? Okay, we'll close it? Intertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to close the public hearing on the FY '23 budget, proposed by our, moved by the chairman of the budget committee. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Public hearing is closed. Thank you, folks. Appreciate you coming in. All right. As we move down the list, Counselor DiStefano, can you open the next public hearing for us? In the supplement, go ahead.
Move to open the public hearing to consider the proposed supplemental appropriation to the fire department operating budget of $235,000 for increased overtime costs.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Public hearing is open. Anyone from the public wish to address? The council or the fire chief is here on this proposed supplemental appropriation. Okay. Don't see anyone. Any counselors?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All right, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. Public hearing is closed. Counselor DiStefano, you have another one for us?
I do. Move to open the public hearing to consider the proposed supplemental appropriation to the ambulance enterprise fund of $150,000 for overtime costs.
Do you hear second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anyone from the public wish to address the council or the fire chief? This is his last shot. He's retiring at the end of this budget season. Well, we do.
We got one more bite at him.
Okay, seeing none, entertain, go ahead.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we are going to, why don't I move this one? I move to open the public hearing to consider a petition for zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 300-6.3, general regulations applicable in all zoning districts to prohibit impervious services within five feet of the property line, with certain exceptions, and to Section 300-2.1 terms defined to add to the term and definition for impervious service coverage and amendment to Section 300, Table 6-2, Table on Height and Bulk Regulations, and to add a column for impervious service coverage of lot, which will set maximum percentages for each zoning district.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The public hearing's open. Mr. Mayor?
So I'm going to turn this over to Allison, who's the technical expert on all these, but just as a reminder, these come from the legislative package, or some of the smaller zoning ordinance amendments to clean up some issues we've had that they've seen, and then complaints also that we've had from residents to try to make things easier for residents and businesses, and then the planning department as well as we modernize the department.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Allison Manuel, the town planner. This first amendment that is up for consideration actually includes two parts. They're within the same section, but they do cover different topics. The first portion of the amendment proposes to add a subsection to our general regulations applicable in all zoning districts, which will require that, rather, will add a restriction on impervious surface within five feet of a property line with exceptions for driveways and sidewalks. This is to address issues where property owners are paving or putting patios or pools or other hardscapes right up to the property line, and the result is that when it rains, the rainwater ends up on their neighbor's property, and it creates problems in that regard. The second portion of the amendment has to do with accessory structures, so that would be detached garages, sheds, things of that nature. Currently, we require all accessory structures to be 15 feet from the principal building, which is typically the home, and at least 10 feet from the property line. The larger they get, the further away they have to be. What we're proposing is to change it so that across the board, all accessory structures only need to be five feet from the principal structure, and with some additional regulations for accessory structures, setbacks from side and rear property lines based upon size. So anything up to 200 square feet, we have added that it would be, only need to be five feet from the side and rear property line, and again, only five feet from the home. And a building permit would not be required. So the state building code does not require a permit, a building permit for these structures, and we wanted to codify that in the zoning to make it clear. And the reason for reducing the setbacks is because we do have a lot of properties in town that have either smaller backyards or narrow backyards, and then the result of that is anybody wanting to put any sort of shed, even just a small garden shed, has to have it 15 feet from their home and 10 feet from either property line in the back. And it, for some folks, means having it in the middle of their backyard. And it seems to be inconsistent with what other communities require, so we're trying to be a bit more in line with that. Now that said, anything between 200 and 400 square feet would still need to be 10 feet from the side and rear property lines, and anything 400 square feet or greater would have to be. and anything 400 square feet or greater would have to be 15 feet or the height of the structure. So, if you have, for example, a 450-square-foot structure, it would, and it's 18 feet high, it would have to be 18 feet off of the property lines. But, again, holding that five foot from the principal structure throughout all of these regulations. So, I'll open it up for questions.
Questions, anyone? Public counsel? Counselor DiStefano?
So, Allison, just help me understand, I wanna make sure I heard you correctly. So, currently, there's a restriction based on how close ancillary structure can be to the home or the primary residence. It has to be a minimum of, I forget, you said 15?
15 feet, yes.
And now it'll be five.
Correct.
The distance from the property line, what is it currently? Is it regardless of size of the structure?
So, anything up to 400, 400 square feet currently needs to be 10 feet from the side and rear. Anything over 400 is 15 feet or the height. The only change here is that 200 square feet or less would only need that five-foot separation. I know it's, it's hard to keep straight, it's a lot of numbers to throw at you, but that, that's the biggest change, is those 200-square-foot or less structures only being five feet.
So, a property owner could legally put a fence up, you know, not on the property line, but theoretically within whatever the code is for fences, not on, I'm not talking about a primary street or a secondary street, but as it runs along another property line.
So, we treat fences differently than accessory structures. Fences currently can go up to, but not on, the property line, with some separate regulations regarding fencing between the home and the street. We do have a separate proposal to address that, which is, in a couple of hearings from now, mostly related to corner lots. So, fences would not have to have that five to 10 to 15-foot setback.
So, that's my only concern, is somebody comes in, they, they put a fence in, they get permitted to put a fence not on, but up to the property line. Now, we're gonna tell them that if you have a structure under 400 square feet or over 400 square feet, whatever all the numbers were, I would think, as Joe homeowner, so long as I put my structure up to my fence, I'd be okay. But that won't be the case, and probably currently isn't the case, because not only do I have to maintain a certain setback from the property line with my structure, but I don't have to do it for a fence. So, so aren't we creating some confusion with, if I put my fence in, it's legal, I would think I should be able to put my structure up to that property line, not talking about street lines, but aren't we inviting some confusion by having that in there? And I know it already exists, this is, this is certainly a step in the right direction to alleviate that confusion, but why would we not allow someone to put a small structure right up to their fence?
Yeah, so, we actually, and I should've added this prior, the planning board discussed this, and they had concerns, actually, that five feet was not enough for these smaller structures. So, people have, I think, strong feelings on either side, probably depending on their experiences with their own property. But structures that have a roof and walls, I think, have a different impact on your neighbors than a fence does. You know, a fence provides privacy for you and ultimately for them in most cases. There's also certain building code requirements related to how close you can be to the property line without having to have a fire wall and different kinds of protection. So, I, I don't issue fence or accessory structure permits myself, but I also haven't gotten any calls from folks who suspect that the two things should be equal. Jay, the building commissioner, is here, I don't know, maybe he wants to speak more to his experience with that. But, like I said, I think the impact of the two is, is a bit different.
Yeah, the five-foot setback would kinda mirror the building code, when he said, if you got a structure closer than five feet to the property line, you'd have to have fire protection with it. And it gets even stricter when you get two feet from the property line. So, you're not gonna be able to go to Skips and buy a shed, pre-built shed, it's not gonna have that fire rating. So, stay in five feet, doesn't require any fire rating, so you can go to Skips or whoever, or Kohler, buy a shed, put it five feet from the property line, you're within the code.
Through the president, again, I'm just thinking of, somebody goes to Costco and buys one of those self-install sheds, right? It's probably eight-by-eight, 10-by-10, so you're talking 100 square feet or 80, 64 square feet, what have you. They figure, well, I can just put it right up against nice corner of my fence, and, but they can't.
And they do, they do.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Intend a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion in front of us, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, public hearing is closed. Counselor Powers, you wanna open the next one for us, or?
Of course. Move to open the public hearing to consider a petition for a zoning ordinance amendment to Section 300-9.2 signs, to add regulations for gas station pump signs, which will clarify sign permit exceptions, exemptions, and allow price displays atop fuel pumps to have electronic changeable copy.
Second.
Okay, public hearing is open. Allison?
So, this changes what we like to call a housekeeping item. As technology has advanced, gas stations would like to change the price displays on their fuel pumps to electronic changeable copy, which is basically a digital price sign, as opposed to the, like, stickers that they have to put up by hand. So, this is just explicitly stating that they are allowed to do that to the extent that the, the sizes are what state law requires, and not anything above and beyond that.
Okay, any questions? Okay, seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion in front of us, close the public hearing, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, public hearing is closed, thank you. Counselor Powers, do you have another one for us?
Yes, I do. Move to open the public hearing to consider a petition for a zoning ordinance amendment to Section 300-9.4 fences, to allow fences between the principal structure and the side street line with a minimum setback of 10 feet from the edge of the street right of way to preserve vehicle sightlines, and to add requirements for fences around pools consistent with the state building code.
Second.
Allison, thank you.
So, this is another two-parter. The first part of the amendment pertains to fences on corner lots. I provided you all with some diagrams that show, or try to illustrate what is currently allowed for fences on corner lots and what we're proposing to allow. So, our current regulations stipulate that you may not have a privacy fence between your house and the street. So, if you live on a corner lot, you obviously have two streets to contend with. If your house is set far back from the corner, that means you can only fence in, privacy fence in a small sliver of your lot. What we have proposed is to allow homeowners to identify a primary street and a side street, and reduce the restriction to only, no, no fence between the house and the front, no fence in the front yard greater than 50% solid and four feet tall. And then, anything between the house and that side street line would be treated as a side yard, and you would be able to fence it in with a privacy fence. We've added an additional caveat, though, that the fence cannot be any nearer to the edge of the right-of-way than 10 feet. So, most of our streets in town have an edge of pavement, which is the actual road that we're, most people are common with, and then there's typically another five to 10 feet before the property line starts. So, on average, you'll have between 10 and 20 feet between the fence and the actual traveled roadway, and the purpose of this is to allow cars to have visibility when they're backing out of a driveway or pulling out of a street at, at an intersection. So, that's the, that's the first part of the change. The second is related to our existing pool fence regulations. There was a lot of discussion about this at the planning board hearing, and folks got a bit hung up on the use of the word fence and, and what the implications of that would be for folks who have above-ground pools of all types. And what we have decided is that it would be better to amend that language to better reflect the state building code, and actually to just refer back to the state building code to clarify that a fence specifically is not needed, but a barrier. And a barrier takes many different forms in the building code. An above-ground pool itself is a barrier. Hot tubs have covers that serves as a barrier. So, rather than getting into the nitty-gritty and specifics, we just have proposed, and you all have that in front of you, to change the language that all outdoor swimming pools shall meet the barrier requirements in accordance with the mass state building code. So, it kinda covers all those bases and unique scenarios that will come up by just referring back to the code.
Anyone from the public, questions? Counsel? Counselor DiStefano?
So, educate me on what happens if you have, not a corner lot, but you have, I guess, for lack of a better term, a sandwich lot. I live between two streets. I had a fence that was permitted through the building department 20 years ago. I couldn't tell you if it's 20 feet away from, or 10 feet away from the road or not. I just know that it got approved when I, you know, pulled a permit for it. If I decide to replace it, and I need to put in a vinyl fence instead of a whatever I have now, do I have to designate what is, for all intents and purposes, my backyard as a, what do you call it? Secondary street as opposed to a primary street to be able to reinstall my fence?
Well, so, the way it's written is that no, the, the proposed language, that is, is no fence located within the front yard and greater than two feet in height or more than 50% solid, you know, is allowed. So, your front yard would be the front of your house to the, to the street, and the front of your house is typically where the address is. So, I, I probably would defer to Jay on how he would enforce it, since he's the one that issues the permits, but I don't foresee that being.
Just because, I'm guessing, there is a significant difference between, for my own interpretation or creation of a sandwich lot as opposed to a corner lot.
But is, is a secondary street a paper street?
Nope.
Oh, it's not?
It's Hillcrest and Audubon.
Yeah, so you could put it 10 feet, we're thinking 10 feet to the property line, which gives you enough room for a neighbor to back out of their driveway and seek visibility up the street or see a pedestrian on a sidewalk if there is a sidewalk. So, 10 feet is sufficient.
Hypothetically, in Kate, I don't know, Kate's, well, if, if it, if it was permitted correctly and we changed these regs, what happens to people who were compliant previously, but when they rip it down and they need to put a new one in, that's when this would trigger for any homeowner?
If they were compliant before, they're gonna actually have more backyard.
Okay.
Because before, if they were compliant, you'd have a little, small, you can see on the picture, a small corner, and it was a lot of people that had corner lots that were complaining that they would only fence in a small 25% of their rear yard, as opposed now, they're gonna have a larger private backyard.
Okay.
It'll benefit residents.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Eager?
Yes. Could you review with us the height and opaque, or?
Opacity.
Opacity limits for these fences near the road?
Yes, so, anything between the principal structure and the street cannot be more than two feet in, anything greater than two feet in height cannot be more than 50% solid. But that's only between the home and the, the primary street. Anything else would, in a residential district, would be six feet, and it could be completely opaque, it can be 100% solid. So, the, the limits on opacity are only for between the, the principal structure and that primary street, the front yard. So, chain link would be fine.
Counselor, you gonna answer your question?
I just got, if someone wanted a taller fence, how far, let's say, from the primary street, how far would they have to put the?
The front plane of the house. So, the, the closest portion of the house to that primary street, the fence could not come any closer than that. So, it would come off the sides.
So, from the side of the house, it could be full height?
Correct.
But when you, from the house to the street, it has to be four feet?
It, if it's greater than two feet, it can't be more than 50% solid, and it may not be more than four feet. So, between two and four feet, it can't be more than 50% solid.
Thank you for the clarity.
Anyone else? Okay.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, it's unanimous, thank you. Did I miss any, Allison, do we have one more, or? One more, okay. Counselor Powers?
Move to open the public hearing to consider a petition for a zoning ordinance amendment to Section 300-6.3 general regulations applicable in all zoning districts, to allow accessory structures up to 200 square feet to be located a minimum of five feet from, from the property line, to allow accessory structures of up to 400 square feet to be located a minimum of 10 feet from the property line, and to allow accessory structures to be located a minimum of five feet from the principal structure.
Second.
Allison?
I'm sorry, I think we already covered that one.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, the, the remaining one is lot coverage, impervious surface coverage.
Impervious surface?
Yep, so, it's 22-08. Oh, you know what, I am, I apologize, I took them
Together.
Out of order
Yeah, that's right.
From the original, from the subcommittee agenda, so I, I'm sorry about that. We did cover the accessory structure setbacks and property barriers first.
Right.
The remaining item, which I did not discuss, is the impervious surface coverage. I don't know if you'd like to reopen that hearing?
No, I think, I think, through the president. Yeah, I read that one, and we covered that.
I think she covered them both, but we didn't vote on the
Closing the other one.
The one that Sean just moved now.
Right, right.
It was discussed, but it wasn't voted on.
Yeah, I opened that one up.
So, there's two different impervious surface items in the junket tonight. So, the first one, I, I did discuss. This last one, which relates to maximum impervious coverage on the lot, I did not.
Right.
So, I didn't follow your procedural discussion there, but I, I'm happy to talk about it if you'd like me to.
The first impervious surface coverage was the five feet excluding sidewalks and pavement.
Right, right.
Which, yeah, which we voted on.
We voted to open and close that public hearing.
Correct. And then the last one, which, yeah, I said the subcommittee was flipped, is this about the 200 square feet? So, the, I'm trying to think of the correct language, the impervious surface coverage, depending on the size of the?
Depending on zoning district.
Yeah.
So, you had spoken to this one.
Accessory structures, not impervious surfaces. Now, I'm confusing myself.
You, you had addressed this one when we talked about the impervious surface the first time. So, you just spoke about them differently, so you didn't talk about impervious. But we already closed that public hearing, so. Anybody have any questions on the topic she already talked about that we just opened? Okay, so, undertake a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay. Motion in front of us, further discussion? Seeing none, Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous. Thank you, we're all set. All right. Public comment, anybody want to address the council on anything that wasn't previously addressed or, or brought up in a public hearing or has a public hearing which will be in front of us at a later date? Linda?
Linda Parent, Belmont Avenue, and a member of the Qantas Club. And I'm just here to mention Family Safety Day. We're doing this in conjunction with the police department, the fire department, Colorado Bike, Westfield Bank, and the West Springfield Biggie Trust. And what this is, is a bike rodeo that we do out in the town hall parking lot. We urge kids to come with their helmets, their bikes, their skateboards, or their scooters. We'll fit them, we'll fit their helmet, and if it doesn't And if it doesn't fit, we'll provide a new helmet for them at no cost. The Lions Club will be there cooking hot dogs. Colorado Bike is gonna, sorry, that's my phone. Colorado Bike is gonna raffle, raffle off a new bike for someone. So if you have any young children in the elementary school, bring them down and have them take a safety course from the Police Department and climb on the fire trucks. Thank you.
Sounds great.
I would take it. No, I wouldn't. I'm too old.
The music was perfect with the, with the bikes and the kids and the. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move to approve the regular meeting minutes, May 2nd, 2022. There is second.
Second.
For the discussion on the minutes, go to a roll call. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. I'll move approval of the study session minutes of May 2nd, 2022. I need a second.
Second.
Moving second to discussion on the motion. Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Abstain.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Abstain.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Abstain.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. In our communications section, we have our student rep here. Appreciate you coming on. Are you a senior?
I am, yep.
Wow. Graduation. Exciting.
It is exciting. Yeah. So I just have a couple of things for you guys today. I'll make it quick. First, just a few things about what the student body has been up to. So our band has been busy. We, they're currently doing a used shoe fundraiser in preparation for the annual Pops concert. So if you're available on the sec, on the 20th of May, we'd love if you could come and support them. It's kind of something they're trying to get up and running every year now. Also, our spring sports are kind of coming to a close. Our track teams both actually have a meet coming up where they'll be trying to qualify for states. So if you want to cheer them on, I'm sure they'd appreciate that. Some exciting news. Our West Springfield High School Democrats Club actually recently created posters and spent hours preparing to participate in the abortion rights march in Hartfield, in Hartford, Connecticut. So it was super cool to see their posts all over Instagram, just them supporting some things that they're really passionate about. And then I also just wanted to touch on a couple of things because we had a school council meeting today with the principal. So just a few things from that meeting. So we firstly discussed the updated district attendance policy, which is going to come into effect next year. So this is something that I'm really excited about personally and something we've been talking about with the school council for a while. I feel like it's a big step towards the idea of encouraging mental health days for students with the rise in depression and anxiety over COVID. I think it's super important that we're doing this. And so it's going to allow for students to take three excused absences throughout the year without a doctor's note. So I was super encouraged by that and I know the student body has been as well as that news is spreading. And then the second thing that I wanted to discuss was the Terriers Buddy Initiative that we're trying to get up and running. So this is something that I've taken an interest in since the start of our unified basketball team at the beginning of this year. It's our first time having a unified team, which basically means students from the general population will be participating in sports with students from our special education department. So I got to participate in that and it was really incredible. So I have been working with Principal Danby to kind of get up and running our Terriers Buddies initiative. So basically, students will take time out of their day, whether they have early release or they have a free period throughout the day, to basically go into classrooms with the special education department and create really meaningful bonds there. People that the students can say hi to in the hallways and feel connected with. They can spend time with them at school dances and things like that. So right now, we're kind of sending out surveys, looking for students who are interested in participating, and we're hoping to have it up and running for next year. So that's what I had to share with you guys today.
Excellent. Thank you. Can you, can you come up and join me for a minute?
Yeah. Tell us where you're going to school and everything. Sit up there and tell us. Tell us.
Where you're going to school?
I'm going to Charles Southern University.
Wow, good for you. Well, in appreciation for your generous service to the council, first of all, we have a plaque for you. Why don't you pull it?
Thank you.
You can hang it up in your dorm room. And we also have a proclamation for you here, which is also signed by the mayor. I don't know if the mayor wants to come up for a picture, but we'll give this to you also.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take your picture. Mayor, you want to come up for a poll?
Studying biology.
Yeah. Counselors, you want to come up? Kids want to come up? Dr. Sharma. Can't wait to call you Dr. Sharma. All right. Come on, you get in the middle. I don't want to.
Well, you get.
You go.
Well, now you guys have to.
Well, I got to get in the back.
You got to get in the back. Coach Griffin.
My day started really bad early.
Thank you guys so much.
Good luck. Great luck.
Thank you so much.
I know you'll be a great success.
Good luck. You did a great job. Yeah. If you need anything, you reach out, all right? Please. There's nine of us up here.
Well, there's only eight tonight.
Pick Jamie first, though. She's a big help to everybody.
Oh, that's right. You get your nameplate, too. Good luck. All right. Anything else? Any subcommittee reports other than what will be coming before us? Okay. Great. Unfinished business. Counselor DiStefano?
Move to approve the proposed supplemental appropriation to the Fire Department operating budget of $235,000 for increased overtime costs?
Second.
Okay. Counselor DiStefano?
So the Budget Subcommittee met to review this tonight and voted unanimously affirmative to support the transfer.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? We do have the chief here. Anybody has any questions? It was reviewed extensively at the subcommittee level. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor DiStefano, I believe you have another one for us.
Move to approve the proposed supplemental appropriation to the Ambulance Enterprise Fund of $150,000 for overtime costs?
Second. Moving second to Counselor DiStefano?
Once again, the Budget Subcommittee reviewed this item this evening and voted unanimously in favor of supporting it, three to zero.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Okay. We'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Powers, you want to move us through the ordinance categories?
Be happy to. Move to approve the petition for a zoning ordinance amendment to Section 300-6.3 general regulations applicable in all zoning districts to prohibit impervious surfaces within five feet of the property line with certain exceptions, and to Section 300-2.1 terms defined to add the term and definition for, in quotes, "impervious surface coverage," and then amendment to Section 300, Table 6-2, Table of Height and Bulk Regulations, to add a column for, in quotes, "impervious surface coverage of lot," which will set maximum percentages for each zoning district.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second to further discussion. Counselor Powers?
So we did have a discussion this evening in the Ordinance and Policy Subcommittee. I thank Ms. Mandul and Mr. Stute for attending, along with the mayor. We did vote two to nothing in favor of this amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion, question? Okay. We'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Powers?
Move to approve the petition for a zoning ordinance amendment to Section 300-9.2 signs to add regulations for, in quotes, "gas pump, gas station pump signs," which will clarify sign permit exemptions and allow price displays atop fuel pumps to have electronic changeable copy.
Second. Counselor Powers? Subcommittee?
So again, we voted two to nothing in favor.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Nope. Okay. We'll go to vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Powers?
Move to approve the petition for a zoning ordinance amendment to Section 300-9.4 fences to allow, to allow fences between the principal structure and the side street line with a minimum setback of 10 feet from the edge of the street right-of-way to preserve vehicular sightlines and to add requirements for fences around pools consistent with the state building code.
Second.
Ms. President?
Yes.
Based on the conversations that we had this evening and what Ms. Mandul presented, I would like to move to amend the amendment as presented to us. Section I will be replaced, will essentially read, "All outdoor swimming pools meet the, shall meet the barrier requirements in accordance with the Massachusetts State Building Code 780 CMR," which stands for Code of Mass. Regulations.
I'll second that. Counselor Powers? Any follow-up?
Yeah. So in our subcommittee meeting this evening, afternoon, this is one of the items that we did discuss. We discussed pre-amendment and post-amendment. This actually came out of what I believe is the planning board's discussion and some confusion after some residents appeared, but also with languages related to fences and barriers and the differences. And following that planning board meeting, I am under the impression that this was the revision that would be best to satisfy and mirror the state building code, which is what we're ultimately aiming for. And that is what we voted in favor, two to nothing on.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion, questions, comments? Counselor Laflambeau?
If I can just add one more thing. In the Subcommittee, we talked about what could qualify as a barrier. And one thing I've talked to a lot of people about, who've called me concerned that they might have to take their pool down because they can't afford to put a fence around it, is that a tarp or something similar can cover the pool and that would qualify as a barrier. And we looked it up online. They're relatively affordable, $30 to $50. You can buy something like that and put it over the pool and that that would qualify, rather than having to put up a fence around your property, which I know concerned a lot of people. So just wanted to throw out, that's an affordable option to create a barrier and then have your pool be up to code.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we're ready to vote on the amendment to the main motion. Okay. We'll go to that. Counselor Laflambeau?